Jason. Good evening, I call this meeting to order. Today we have three items in the agenda. First, facilities condition update, then fourth floor virtual tour, and last, emerging issues. And we have Mr. Minishi today with us to give us the first presentation, the facility condition update. Thank you for joining us.
Hello, thank you, Council President Perez and council members. I will be giving you a short update on the facility condition assessment along with the fourth floor PD training and city attorney's remodel that is almost completed. So I will get right into it and start with the presentation of our slideshow here. Okay, so we'll start off with the facility condition assessment update, also known as the FCA. Just to give a quick overview, this is a process of analyzing the condition of our facilities in terms of age, design, construction, the equipment, and basically the lifespan of each piece of equipment, including the building and the envelope itself. They performed by McKinstry did our facility condition assessment. We went out with the RFP. Along with that, we also had them input all this information into a facilities work order system that will now print out work orders for us along with preventive maintenance assignments. So this way, we're able to track all of our equipment and the maintenance along each day, each week. We have monthly, weekly maintenance items. We did all of the major buildings, our city hall, our park restrooms, basically every piece of property the city owned as far as public buildings go. Along with this assessment came with our capital component replacement needs, so we have a capital forecast in place now for at least the next six years as we're continuing to develop that. And then we are also able to prioritize our list. So our number one concern is life safety items, and then number two are items that would shut down our building. I'm sorry, I might not introduce myself earlier. I'm also the facilities director. I wasn't sure, so I will go back one step here. In 2019, we did a huge, probably one of the bigger projects for City Hall definitely, was our mammoth replacement. And this is our HVAC system that controls all of City Hall. It handles the air conditioning, the heating, the airflow for the entire building. We had a budget of 1.9 million. We did go over slightly with 100,000. We had to tear off part of the roof and found some things that had to be fixed while we were there. So over, total cost was just a little over 2 million. The picture here on the left you can see is the old unit. The new unit is on the right. If anybody would like to see in person one day, please let me know. I would be glad to take you up on the roof and give you a tour. This also was part of the replacement project here. This is what we call a cooling tower. Instead of replacing it, we decided to refurbish it. We felt that this was the right way to go as far as money wise. We saved about quarter million doing it this way, along with pretty much the same amount of lifespan. So it was just, it made sense. This handles majority of the police area for cooling, along with some of the IT areas. We're currently still working on the City Hall elevator project. This began in about 2018, design maybe 2017. It's getting pretty close to completion. We had a budget of 3.5 million. We spent 2.4, almost 2.5 right now. 65% complete. We do estimate the completion of June of 2021. We are currently working on the third elevator now, so two elevators are brand new, up and running. The third one is down and almost complete. We will be doing some testing this month, and hopefully that will get certified, and then we'll begin our fourth elevator. All four elevators are projected to be finished this year, but part of this project, we are also doing the City Hall generator along with this and a few other lobby remodels. So it's pretty important for us to, the generator definitely, without the generator, none of this would work in an emergency, so. 2020, 21, hopefully we'll be able to complete this project at the end, by the end of 2021 for the generator project. We have currently two generators, one on the left, one on the right. We will be removing both of them and putting one bigger generator in. Along with this project, we'll also be putting the IT server room on the first floor and the traffic control room that's on the fifth floor that currently do not have generator backup. They will both be on generator backup after 2021. So that's, I think, a really, really, really big just win for the city area. I mean, it's something that we must do, that IT landroom downstairs is pretty much the heart and brains of City Hall, and without it, there would be no teleworking at the moment, so. Some other projects that are also in the facility condition assessment that we prioritize as critical is the City Hall boilers, pumps, and storage tank replacement. This handles all the hot water throughout City Hall. We will be replacing this whole, the plan was to replace it this year, but we will be pushing it back to 2021. We'd like to get into design this year at the very minimum. That way, if something does fail on this, these components, we will at least have a design ready to go. Without hot water, we wouldn't be able to have City Hall open, so it's a pretty critical piece of equipment. Most of the equipment that you're seeing here is over 20 years old and is beyond their lifespan, so we have been working every day to keep them running as best as we possibly can. We're estimating 636,000 for this project, but we are continuously trying to chop those numbers down a little bit. The City Hall fire pump. Another project that was estimated to happen actually this year, scheduled to happen this year, that we will be pushing back along with the boilers. So we will be doing the boilers, generators, and the fire pump all together as one project. Two different companies, but one project and working together. The fire pump here, you're seeing a generator on the right is a electric generator for the fire pump, and then one on the left is the actual backup, which is a diesel fire pump. We haven't made a decision to go fully electric or diesel yet, but we're working out the details. Estimated projects around 861,000. This handles all the fire protection for the sprinklers through City Hall. Some of the projects that probably will not happen this year is the city center parking garage. We're hoping to get fit this in with our DES, which is a Department and Enterprise Services, and our ESCO project, which is our energy savings company, who is also McKinstry, for lighting, security, LED savings with the parking garage near the pavilion downtown. We're really, really trying to get this project put in with the other projects with the boiler, fire pump, and generators, which will also be done by our ESCO team, McKinstry, to save, basically, the LED portion of this would save us roughly about 24,000 a year in electricity bill. So we're really trying to make the numbers work so we can fit this in. Some of the projects that are postponed due to the situation we're currently in is what you're seeing here is the RCC, the Renton Community Center chiller replacement. It's a pretty old chiller. The fans are missing, which are now replaced, but they do fail quite often. They damage what we call coils inside. It's a $210,000 project. We have it postponed currently to 2021. It is an item that if failed would cause definitely some trouble during the summer. It is the only time it runs at the community center and is strictly for cooling. We'll go back one step here. Along with this project, we also postponed quite a few other projects for, due to the COVID-19 situation. We have a whole list of projects from the facility condition assessment that lined out over 1,700 pieces of equipment that are past its lifespan that the city of Renton owns. Majority of these items are smaller units that are 20,000 to 30,000, 40,000, 50,000 dollar project costs. For example, Public Workshop has many of these items that sit on the roof for their cooling and HVAC, so their ventilation, their heating that need to be replaced. These items all have been postponed until 2021, so hopefully we could get back on track. Moving along, we have the City Hall fourth floor project. The budget now was 1.7 million. This project is still going. We're very at the tail end. We have a punch list items that are being taken care of as of right now. The police department is using their training center. We do have a classroom that was being used. So on the picture on the left there, you'll see the classrooms. Classroom for all employees to use. They have a smart TV, very, the tables there all have outlets for your laptops. Next to the picture in the middle is the kitchenette area, fully remodeled. This is where the city attorneys will be at, along with their, picture to the far right is their, what they call the war room. So it's just a big conference room where they get spread out their legal documents and leave it there. It would be, the whole area is fully secured, so only currently, city attorneys would be allowed in, along with PD and whoever else that would need access. So after this slide here, we'll follow into the, into the video that was made by Pre-D's team and PD. They did an excellent job. It's a great, about seven minute video of the defensive tactics and simulator. One note for the facilities condition assessment is the facilities condition affects the city. The buildings that they're working out of, the equipment all play a role, even though it's always kind of in the back burner in the basement, people don't realize. But it affects every individual here. It affects the kids, the H Mac pool, what takes a lot of work, the joy of all the citizens, the PD, the officers, the employees. So it's very important that the equipment stay running. Without the buildings, it was just not comfortable space for employees that'd be working. So we pride ourselves on trying to make the space as comfortable as possible, customer service. We want the equipment to work so our staff, the employees of Renton will be working at their best. Is there any questions? I kind of ran through that a little bit pretty quickly, so I could definitely go into more detail.
Thank you, Mr. Minishi. Do you, council members, do you have any questions? I don't see anybody raising their hand, so, so thank you. That was a great presentation, so we can move with the second item on our agenda, which is the fourth floor virtual tour. And, and that's going to be you as well? Okay.
I will play that for you, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so this video was made by Pre-D's team and also PD, so I will hit play and full screen. Is the audio working there?
It wasn't yet.
It was not working.
Okay, let, let me, I had this issue earlier.
Today, we're going to give you a tour of our recently constructed Renton Police Training Facility. There are three areas of our training center. One is the defensive tactics training room. The other...
Sorry, the audio is working there, correct?
Yes, Jeff.
Correct.
Yes.
...simulator, and then there's a general purpose classroom. When you first step into the area that houses the defensive tactics training room and the simulator, you walk into a small foyer that has a series of lockers. We use those lockers to allow officers to take off all of their real world lethal weapons, their firearm, as well as their intermediate tools, their taser, their batons. We do that to ensure that no live weapons get into play because we often use training weapons in our training, and we don't want those to get mixed up. That's how people end up getting hurt. Safety is paramount for us. Once they've put all of their equipment in those lockers, we then have them step into the training room where we physically pat them down by an instructor, as well as we ask them to check themselves one more time. The first thing we're going to talk about is our defensive tactics training room. This room is currently set up for baton and taser training, which is what we were doing when the coronavirus came, which shut down our training.
Sir, you're under arrest.
No, I'm not pulled back.
You don't want to have a taser, and it's not pulled back.
You're under arrest.
No.
Taser, taser, taser.
There are other purposes for this room as well. Earlier this year, our range master, Officer Tebow, put together some training that we did, low light firearms training in this room. We use what we call non-lethal training ammunition, which is a cartridge that shoots a plastic pellet, and we're able to use those against real live role players. So we took this room, we carpeted or blanketed the walls with bisque green to block out all the light. We were able to turn a light off, and it gives officers an opportunity to use their illumination tools, their flashlights, the lights on the ends of their weapons, in order to more effectively put those into practice. Also inside our defensive tactics training room are two rooms that we call reality-based training rooms. These rooms will be set up eventually as if you were walking into somebody's home or perhaps an office with furniture. There are doorways that they have to go through, corners that they can't see around, and it just creates a more realistic scenario for them as they would navigate an apartment or an office building, some interior space. Before the coronavirus locked down the state and we were under these mandates that we couldn't have large groups together, we had a class that was scheduled here. Hey, sir. It's Officer Dre from the Renton Police. Do you need some help? Sir? Hello?
Oh, Reagan, get away from my mental health device!
Ah, I see. Hey, can I help you? Just turn around and talk to me for a bit.
I don't need any help, you wretched...
Come on, man, I might be able to help you find your mental health device. Can you turn around, please? Hey, man, you need to drop that knife. Yeah, drop that knife, right now.
Not the world!
Come on, you need to drop the knife, sir.
Shoot me, man.
I don't want to shoot you. I'm not here to shoot you. What I'm here to do is help you. Can you drop that knife and have a seat on the ground, please? Hey, do you guys know him? Do you know him? What's his name? Tell him to drop the knife.
Never!
Tell him to drop the knife, please. Can you guys, hey, just back up a little bit, you guys? What's his name? Drop the knife, man. Come on, just sit on the ground. One of the two.
I promise, he's not a problem.
Okay, can you guys just back up a little bit? There you go.
Just drop the knife, man. Put the knife down.
There you go, drop that knife, Jeff. Listen to what your buddy's telling you.
Keep the knife down.
Just don't shoot him, I'll put the knife down!
Yeah, there you go, Jeff. Go ahead and drop it. All right, have a seat on the ground, please. There you go, just sit down. Go ahead, have a seat. There you go. All right, hold on. As soon as my partner gets here, we're going to get you some help.
So what you've just seen is an example of the type of training that we can provide to our officers using this 300 degree state-of-the-art simulator. It offers the officers an opportunity to experience more real world scenarios where they have to encounter different subjects under unknown situations, adapt and react to whatever's going on. Typically, we used to do this using real role players, and it took a lot of staffing, a lot of manpower to try to put it together and make it safe. With the simulator, we're able to do that same amount of training or even more, using less officers, less time, and get them more repetitions, because we know through studies that the more repetitions that they get, the more likely they are to react the way we want them to out on the street when they're in those real world situations. The range side of the simulator gives us an opportunity to practice our firearm skills in a controlled environment. This simulator allows us to run those officers through whatever drills we want to, and it controls the environment, such as a rainy or cloudy day, the distance we want them to shoot at, and then how many rounds we want them to fire before they have a malfunction or they need to do a reload. It gives us control over that entire spectrum. We use real world weapons that have actually been converted over to an electronic version, and what that does is that allows us to control the guns so that we can set up malfunctions or the need to reload so that the officer can experience that just the way they would out on a real range, but we're saving all of the ammunition costs associated with going out to a live range and burning through that ammunition. The other side of that is we're not exposing our officers to the same amount of lead that comes from real world live fire ammunition. So one of the nice things about this system is that it allows us to actually see what the officers are doing from the time they draw their weapon out of their holster to the time that they finish the course of fire. The laser is tracked on the screen as they're doing everything. So every time the trigger is pressed, we see where their muzzle was just prior to that, and then we see how the gun reacts afterwards. What this allows us to do is to make them more proficient.
Thank you. This was a very good presentation. Both of the presentations were very good. So with that, council members, do you have any questions or comments? Well, seeing none, I want to appreciate your present, council member O'Halloran, you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, not for this.
Oh, no, for the, okay.
Madam President.
Yeah, council member Corman.
I, I just want to say it's, I really enjoyed the tour, the virtual tour, and, and as, you know, as, as one of the council members that really pushed to, or supported that training center, it's really nice to see it coming together, and it's, it's exactly what I would hope. So I feel like you're really, you're really following through on, on what we were aiming to do, and I thank you for that. It looks really good.
Thank you, council member Corman. I, I want to echo his sentiment. One of the reasons why we were very supportive in the past of to upgrade these facilities because we want to keep our community safe and, and as well as our police officers. So you just said it, as much as we can provide for many opportunities to be trained, this also gives them more expertise on the field and more than anything save lives in the long run. So thank you very much for the presentation, and I'm going to move to the third item on the agenda, which is emerging issues. Council member O'Halloran.
Yes, thank you. I would like to take a minute to talk about the de-intensification facility at the Red Lion Hotel, and I want to commend everybody who was involved in all these discussions with King County Executive and Council, and I want to propose a second approach. And so with that, what I'd like to do is just take about two minutes and read what I submitted to Council President Perez for consideration of the council. So, Madam President, I would like to ask if there's any interest in the council as a body in submitting a letter to the owner operators of the Red Lion Inn, asking them and encouraging them not to renew the contract with King County for the de-intensification facility. It would be important to commend their Renton spirited belief in partnering with the region and demonstrating compassion for our most vulnerable population. However, to that end, our immediate community has suffered specific and identifiable damage, and the loss of goodwill within the downtown core could take years for us to recover. While we, the city council, continue to support the Red Lion and the efforts of King County, we believe that 90 days is more than sufficient for any one city to bear the burden of a facility of this type. We strongly recommend that the Red Lion not renew the contract and instead insist that King County find another city to take a turn at sheltering this population. Is the Renton City Council interested in pursuing such a correspondence with the owner operators of the Red Lion Inn? Respectfully submitted, Valerie O'Halloran. Thank you.
Thank you, council member O'Halloran. I think most of you know that last Monday, we testified, this King County Council, and and they, they are, they, there were a lot of examples of, of what is happening at the King, at the Red Lion. And while I have to say that I agree that out of the 200 and plus residents that are right now at the Red Lion, 100 of them are taking this opportunity to, to just be, because to have that sense of dignity and security that is most needed to get out of from that place of homeless. The problem is the other 100 and plus ones that are not following some of the governor's order of stay home and, and also they follow the social distance and, and other orders to keep this pandemic in control, if we can call it like that. So we were very fortunate to have the support of six King County council members at the floor level. Three council members did not support our argument. They strongly believe that every single city in King County should do their part, and I do agree with that. I think that Renton should do their part in this, in this, but also, King County Council member Dembroski said that everybody should do their part, but nobody should be asked to do more than their part. This de-intensification facility shelter is the largest in King County. The other quarantine facilities, some of them are not open, like the ones in Quinnan and the ones in White Center have not been open, and in total, among all the quarantine sites in King County, they are not more than 33 people. But in the de-intensification shelter is a different story. There are 90 people in the one in Bellevue, 100 in the CITAC, and 200 in Renton. With that, I want to open the floor for any comments regarding sending a letter to the owner of the Red Lion.
Madam President.
Council member Corman.
Yeah, so I thank Council member O'Halloran for the, for the really good idea, and I, I mean, it's, it's consistent with something I've been concerned about, which is I, I don't understand at all the exit plan for this shelter. And to, to Mrs., or to Ms. O'Halloran's point, the, you know, 90 days, after 90 days, that hotel could probably still be refurbished and put back into service. At some point, I don't know if it's six months or nine months or a year, it seems really questionable whether they could, you know, get the permits to return it to a hotel. And, and I think Renton really does have a vested interest with that sitting at our gateway to have it not end up as some sort of derelict building for, for six years or eight years as somebody tries to figure out what to do with it. And, and I know that the county's working through an emergency right now, but, but because they're working through an emergency, they probably have not been able to advise the owner of that building exactly what, you know, what sort of situation they're going to end up in. And so, in a way, I mean, I almost feel like we, we owe it to them to have the ownership, to have a frank conversation, bringing forward all that we know about, you know, if there's excessive wear and tear, what would it mean if, if all the rooms have to be renovated? If they do, does that trigger codes that require, you know, maybe it's more than 50% value and all of a sudden, you know, what does that all mean? And I think we, we should bring that forward, because if we don't and we sort of withhold that information, and then after six months, they need to renovate the entire hotel, and they can't afford the upgrades that come with it, we might, we might just end up with, you know, a hotel, an empty hotel sitting there for years and years. So I, I think it's a, it's an excellent idea. And I will say again, that that hotel, it's, I don't know that much about like the O'Connell Lodge in Kent, but this particular hotel, which was the Sheraton, when I moved to town, it was the first residence my wife and I stayed in in Renton. It's where Boeing put us up for, you know, for the first few weeks we were here. My, my daughter was once worked there, the front desk. It's where the Nishiwaki group just recently chose to, to stay as their favorite place. They really liked it. They really liked that hotel. It's really familiar to them. And so it's not like a hotel. And I don't know the circumstances. I hear that, you know, I've heard through the grapevine, well, maybe the Red Lion was thinking of selling it, but I don't think in any way that hotel was past its prime. It was still, it was still a beautiful facility and could provide many, many more years of service. So with all those things in consideration, I thank Councilmember O'Halloran for the suggestion, and I think it's an appropriate one.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman. I agree with you. And also, Leslie, yeah, Leslie, can you update us a little bit on what is the status of the agreement, the MOU between the City of Renton and King County? This has been already signed or not?
Good evening, Council President Perez and members of the city council. As I believe the council members know, the mayor's office and city staff had a joint call with King County members on last Tuesday morning to discuss the status of the draft MOU. We did ask for a response with a red line of the MOU that we had presented as soon as possible, and to my knowledge, we have not yet received a response from King County on that draft.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other council members have other questions, concerns, or comments regarding this? Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
I just wanted to say thank you for letting me air that, and I believe that a two-ponged approach, one with the county and the second going directly to the owner-operators, would serve us quite well. And I would just hate to have an opportunity slip by where we don't have an opportunity to say what we strongly feel needs to be said. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Halloran, and I also want to thank King County Councilmember Depple, that this week received a little bit of very negative comments from people that took out of context the real situation that we're living here in Renton, and they went very public on the radio and on social media to active negative attack, his support for the situation in Renton. I do believe that he's very in touch with the needs of the community, and he understands that this is not that we don't want to cover our role, and a very humane one, but also to be able to protect every single resident in Renton, and this includes now the residents at the Red Lion. So keeping in mind that we have more cases in Renton of COVID-19 than even Seattle has, and we need to make sure that everybody is protected in our area. And having less incident of COVID-19 cases in our city, it's part of the job that we have to do and know how to prevent it and try to aggressively suggest to our community to wear masks, especially when they go indoors. This is very important right now. So, Councilmember McCrory, do you have anything to say? No? I thought that you raised your hand.
Did I raise my hand? I didn't mean to. But since I have the floor, just the one thought I had, and it wasn't necessarily directly, it relates to this and to the comment that Councilmember Corman brought up about the future use. I don't necessarily disagree with anything that was said. The one thing I would like to keep in mind, and maybe it's still far out that it doesn't come into play yet, but in terms of the kind of surrounding footprint of that site and how it develops around sound transit, certainly is something I think we should consider and what are the impacts of this short term and long term on that. So that's the only thing I want to make sure we take into account moving forward as well, which I'm sure we were.
Thank you, Councilmember McCrory. Councilmember Ban?
Oh, I think Councilmember Benedetti had her hand raised before mine.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Benedetti.
Oh, that's fine. So the question that I have is, and perhaps Leslie or Mr. Mayor could speak to this, how does such an action as is proposed work either for or against or in concert or not in concert with the administrations and the legal avenues that the city is already pursuing? I'd like to hear sort of where, why this would be particular to the council's role as opposed to administration, and whether or not it would be in keeping with the approach that we are trying to take in talking about this problem. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would you prefer to address that or would you like me to?
You can go ahead and start off, and then I will reply afterwards. Thank you.
I think that's a perfect plan because I think what I'm about to say will be unsatisfying. So as to avoid giving privileged advice during the public portion of the council meeting, what I would propose that we do is either to have that question referred to administration so that we can respond in a privileged setting, or we could recess to executive session if the purpose of it is to discuss rest of litigation.
Thank you, Leslie. Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. Now, Councilmember Ban?
Does Mr. Mayor want to speak or? No, okay. Yeah, I thank you, Council President. I wanted to first thank Councilmember O'Halloran for bringing up the topic and your suggestion. I think it's very important for us as council to look at this more seriously in a council approach. I know that Council President and the team had spoken last week. But for me, I have seen this as an issue from the day one in the sense that we need to look at more of a holistic approach, and I think that your suggestion is a great one, although I just don't know the timing of it. And also, as far as what is the exit strategy, which I believe Attorney Clark just kind of mentioned, that there's really no response in King County. My concern is surrounding the development of the sound transit, but as far as the folks, guests who are in the hotel, as far as our communities in Renton who are being affected as well, especially with them not being able to have access to masks. You know, I myself have donated with community members masks for them because I think it's a public safety, but public safety doesn't always go around crimes. It's really the health of our community members here as well as the guests. So that's kind of just kind of my overall thought process is where does King County, as far as communication when it comes to the exit strategy, what is it after the 90 days?
Yeah. And what I can tell you right now is just what I was agreeing on the meeting on Monday, which was, I think, Doug Levy, are you in the call? No? Yes, Doug Levy, you're here. Can you please explain to the council what was voted on the floor on Monday?
I can. Can folks hear me okay?
Yes.
So what the council did with their committee of the whole meeting, and these were amendments for the county's emergency spending ordinance on COVID-19, there were two amendments germane to our situation with the shelter. One is that there is a $500,000 mitigation fund built into the emergency ordinance that would be available to local governments seeing significant impacts from county emergency facilities. And then secondly, and probably even more directly, Councilmember Up to Grove had an amendment that conditions the renewal of the 90-day lease on the county executive transmitting a report to the council that goes over their rationale for the lease extension, and that would be something that the county council would have to approve. So that would be a tie to the funding, about 1.2 million for the de-intensification shelter. So those are the two things that are woven into the spending ordinance. As of now, they still have to be voted on by the full council on Tuesday.
Tomorrow, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, tomorrow goes to the full council, and after we hear from them, then we're going to know, and we're waiting still to know what is going to happen with the memorandum of understanding, so that way we will know if they will end up these leads in 90 days or if they will decide to continue for Renton to hosting the Red Lion, 200-plus homeless people in that facility. I want to thank publicly the six council members that voted in favor of Renton, that is King County Councilmember Depple, the Grove, Rick and Dawn, Kathy Lambert, Peter Von, I'm going to destroy his name, Peter Von Righteous, Von Righteous, or some people will know how to pronounce it, and as well as Councilmember Dembroski and Councilmember Jermaine Sahar, which I also apologize if I am destroying your name. Thank you very much for understanding this issue. And again, this is not just about, this is protecting our residents of Renton, and that includes already those 200-plus individuals that are in the Red Lion. Just a reminder, everybody knows that our city is very diverse, and I want to quote something that I read today that is very much what I think about the situation, is the route to achieving equity will not be accomplished through treating everybody equally. It will be achieved by treating everybody equitable or justly according to their circumstances. So we will, again, I think we want to do our part, but we want to, for this decision to be fair to everybody involved. So does anybody else have anything else to add?
Madam President?
Councilmember Corman?
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify my concerns a little bit, and I don't want to make any judgments about the particular residents of the building. I don't know them, and they could be doing a great job taking care of it. I don't know. But I did want to just clarify that, you know, as many of you know, my wife and I were running an Airbnb actually out of room of our home, and it was interesting, we made some, so that's as close as I've ever been to being in the hospitality business, I'd say. Made some interesting discoveries, you know, one of them is that people will come and rent the place, and they're there for like three hours a day because they're touring Seattle and they're going to restaurants and they're just gone so much. But even so, of course, we would follow up by cleaning the room, you know, top to bottom after, I mean, when I say that they're there three hours a day, obviously they sleep there, but they spend hardly any time in the room. And I think for most of us, we've experienced that when we go and we stay in hotels. There's hotels where, you know, you'll stay there in the city, and I've gone to business meetings for full days, and I've gone to hotels near amusement parks, and we hardly spend any time there. We don't even have time to get to the pool. So what I'm getting at is when you instead take all the restaurants out of the equation so there's nowhere to eat anymore, and you start talking about people spending 24/7 either in the room or just wandering around on the, you know, the street nearby, but there's, I don't understand where the meals are taking place. As nice as this hotel is, I don't remember it having kitchen facilities in the rooms. I presume if people are eating in the rooms, they're eating over carpeted areas, they're probably sitting, you know, they're sitting on the bed, that's an important part of the furniture. But really, the point is that the building's not designed to be a place that houses people 24/7, and it's not provided, it's not intended to be a place where everybody gets all their meal service from the building. And then in addition to that, we've heard the fire chief say that fencing that's been put through fire lanes and sort of blocking fire access, and then because of security issues, some of the doors have been chained shut, all sorts of things like that all run the risk. And that's where I wanted to just be clear, when I talk about the, you know, how long can the building go and still be returned to a serviceable hotel? Those are the types of things. And typically, a hotel would do its room refurbishments a little bit at a time. They'd take some rooms out of commission and refurbish them. If, in a case where you have 200 to 250 people living 24/7 in the rooms, and then you get to, say, the end of that contract, and all of a sudden you're trying to make the whole hotel work again, that's when you might do so much refurbishment, you'd trip a code that says that you've got to now bring everything else up to speed. And I'd also point out that even though the county, and I appreciate that they said that they are looking in on the guests, there's really an army of housekeeping service that's not working right now that would normally be working, helping take care of that place. So those are the types of things that I'm concerned about, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Corman, and I do strongly agree with you, and we have Chief Marshall on the line, and this is great because there is a part that I, today I received an email from him that he sent to the King County Councilmember Depple when he explained that resources are not enough, and of course, this situation is not going to be sustainable. And I have not been inside, of course, of the de-intensification facility, but Chief Marshall and the firefighters have been inside, so he probably can give us a better picture as what is the condition of that facility looking today. Thank you, Chief Marshall, for joining us today.
Sure. So I guess I would liken it, and I want to be, you know, careful, that I would liken it to, we've heard stories about the jungle in Seattle, and this is, this situation is not unlike that. The people that we're seeing are the same people that are there. And so we do, and Chief Ann Bailey could certainly echo my comments, that these people pose challenges. They are aggressive, and the longer that they're there, and the longer this becomes their home, the more comfortable and confident they get and the more aggressive they get. And the more it's going to, you know, we've taken steps, but our steps have been on the front end, hoping that this would come to an end. This is going to require us to, in order for us to keep our people safe, to take different measures as far as our response that we're not used to, and quite frankly, you know, in the letter that I sent to King County Council and the testimony as well, a city like Renton just doesn't have the infrastructure to support these type of facilities long term. So to the extent that we can, I mean, we will absolutely be partners with the county, but like I testified at King County Council, the residents that come to the Red Lion, regardless of who they are, become Renton residents. And those residents deserve every amount of life safety, you know, safety and protection, and the same level of emergency response as any other citizen in Renton. It's no different than if they were staying anywhere in the city. They're at our Red Lion, and our Red Lion is in Renton, and we are proud to serve them. So we are going to do everything that we can, but that absolutely has impacts, and it absolutely has impacts on every other citizen in Renton when we have to devote more and more of our attention there. I think there's a statistic that we pulled today that our primary fire station that deals with that, the Red Lion, is now 28%, 29% of the calls that they go on since this was started are to the Red Lion alone, not to every other response district that they go to.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Marshall. Councilmember Benedetti?
Yes, Chief Marshall, thank you. Am I to understand that the, so what I understand is that the amendment that is being proposed is $500,000 to help mitigate any kind of response from the city of Renton. Is that correct? And does that then mean that the RRFA, of that $500,000, what can the RRFA potentially expect to help mitigate the situation, understanding that you are a separate body than the city of Renton?
That's a great question and one that I don't have a complete answer for. I actually met with Mayor Pavoni today and have, and did hear back from Councilmember Up to Grove that he plans, Councilmember Up to Grove plans to introduce legislation that doesn't just include cities but includes other local governments. So we should be able to see that. You know, the delicate balance that we're finding is that, you know, we're the city of Renton's fire department. know, we're, we're, we're the city of Renton's fire department, and, and so we wanna make sure that, that while we're made whole, that we also don't try and jump into this me-too thing that, that, that turns the King County Council into a situation where they feel like, um, you know, uh, you know, here we go, there's one more at the well. And so, so that's where the, the relationship with the city of Renton is critically important, uh, with the Renton, uh, city of Renton council members, with, with the mayor and mayor staff, um, and, and with, with Doug, to continue to make sure that we, um, are in alignment with how we wanna approach this, so that, so that, you know, we're just responsible and, and, and we get the most that we can for Renton without drawing borders, uh, between Renton RFA and, and the city of Renton. But. If I, if I could, this is Doug Levy, just if, if I can clarify for Councilmember Benedetti, this is not a $500,000 fund for Renton, this is a $500,000 mitigation fund in the budget that would be available to local governments impacted by COVID-19 emergency facilities. And to the chief's point, I think councilmember up the grove wants to fine-tune the language so that it wouldn't just be cities, but it could also be, um, fire districts that are affected. So I think we would be a, uh, a major city and fire district that would be eligible for that funding, but it wouldn't just be for Renton. Thanks.
Thank you, chief, thank you, Doug. Councilmember O'Hara, do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to clarify that the $500,000 is not just for Renton. Thank you, Doug.
Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Benedetti?
Thank you. Um, so do we have an idea of what some, not looking at the overall of the $500,000, but do we have an idea as a city of what some would support and potentially, you know, make whole the, uh, response that we have had to, uh, step up in order to support the facility?
Not that I'm aware, Bob? Bob Harrison?
Yes.
Do you have an answer?
So, well, so we don't have a, a final financial impact yet. Um, what we have been doing is collecting, uh, collecting the statistics from the police department and the fire, uh, department to understand what the localized impact is, and then, um, the question would be taking that impact and testing it against, uh, you know, whatever the test would be for that, uh, potential, um, mitigation. I think Doug, and I don't know if this got resolved yet or not, um, would it be, um, eligible only after the city's CARE dollars that came from the state? Is it, is it limited there, or would it be available, uh, from dollar one?
So, uh, this is Doug, this is likely to be money that would be available to us, if indeed the, to Bob's point, the CARES Act money, that, the federal money that's coming through the state's allocation to us, 3.14 million, um, if that money doesn't prove to be enough. And, um, the other thing I would like council know is the CARES Act money, um, cannot simply be used in any way we, we please, it has to be for necessary expenditures that are involved in responding to COVID-19 and, uh, incremental costs that were not initially budgeted. So to Bob's point, one of the exercises, I think the mayor and he are having staff go through is to, to tease out what are the things that were not budgeted, the additional overtime, uh, those kinds of expenses, um, that would be involved in the, in the Red Lion response.
So Doug, um, I have a question, this is going a little bit into the weeds, but just as an example, if we are spending money to clean the graffiti created by the, the de-identification shelter, this money cannot be used for that?
That's a great question. I, the, the money can be used for, um, resources, um, for a variety of things responding to a public health emergency. Uh, can we make an argument that, um, we're spending resources over and above what we plan to? I think we can, but that's one of those things that needs to be, um, vetted, um, not only with the mayor's office, but with the city attorney's office, because we wanna make sure we have, um, legally defensible expenditures that we think are clearly, um, in response.
Thank you, Doug. Any more questions?
Um, Madam President?
Councilmember Corman?
Yeah, so if I could just paraphrase, and I, and I attended the RFA meeting this morning, uh, along with, um, you and Ryan as well, um, but, you know, we've, if, if there was ever a year when we're all sort of stuck with the budget that we, uh, that we started with, I mean, this is it, we're lucky if we can finish this year with the budget that we started with. So the, the reality of when we send police officers to the Red Lion, or when we send firefighters to the Red Lion, is that those police officers and firefighters are not available to take other calls during that time. You know, we, we might be trying to put some additional firefighters and police officers on overtime because of sort of the enormous amount of pain from all the calls, but, but the fact is, if, if firefighters are at the Red Lion, and then someone else's house catches on fire, those firefighters may not have been in the optimum position. So in other words, um, while, while the citizens of Renton, uh, recently, um, you know, passed a, a measure to create the RFA and to fund an additional fire station, and to have more vehicles available and to have better protection for everybody, we're, we're now taking all that and channeling it to, you know, an enormous number of calls at the Red Lion. It's hard at the end of the day to tell King County, well, look, we spent this much more money because of the Red Lion, because we might still just spend the budgeted money, but it's just we're, we're, we're redirecting it, um, taking it away from, from what its original intent was, and, and hopefully it doesn't, hopefully it doesn't lead to a tragedy somewhere else. I mean, we'll try and keep our response times up, and I'm sure the police and fire are trying to prioritize, but the fact is, they have a little less resource now because of this. So I feel like in years past, uh, one metric I've seen us use is, and I'm sure we've, we've got this, I'm sure that the, uh, police and fire departments know this, is to sort of take the, the cost per call, to, to take the number of calls we receive in a year, uh, in either the police or fire department, and, and calculate on average, how much does that call cost? I think we recent, most recently did that for the police when we, um, talked about the false alarm ordinance, and, and we're assessing fees to people that have given false alarms of their burglar alarm. Um, and, you know, it, it seems to me at some point, maybe we should start to look at the number of calls we're getting at the, uh, Red Lion and figure out what the cost is just based on the, the number of calls for service. Um, I don't know that the county will be that happy with it, but, um, but I still feel like, you know, having emergency authority, um, it's, it's, I'm glad that the, um, county executive has emergency authority, um, I think he's acted within his authority, I appreciate his work, but that doesn't excuse the county from the costs of using that emergency authority. Um, it's, you know, ultimately, the whole county should be covering the costs, not just the city of Renton. It, it, just because somebody has emergency authority, it can, can make quick decisions, doesn't mean they're immune to the costs of those decisions. And so in this case, I guess I, um, I feel like we should, we should be, we should be keeping it, adding it up, figuring out what, what, what Renton is really incurring, and then, um, expect to present that bill, uh, ultimately.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman, I appreciate so much your perspective on this. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, Councilmember of the Grove received a lot, uh, some negative comments, but those were people that do not live in Renton, those people that live outside of the city of Renton. So, uh, having longtime residents and people that know exactly how our budget works, uh, uh, is very important to bring it, to bring that voice into that, this table. Uh, Councilmember Benedetti?
Uh, just one final question. Um, I know that when we were in the committee of the whole, a few weeks back, and, uh, received a presentation from this and, and learned sort of what was happening from DESC and from the county, we presented the information that we had about the call volume and some of the impacts that we were experiencing. I'm wondering, has business, has there, has the business model at the Red Lion changed at all in response to that? Has there been any shift, an increase in security, uh, a change in, uh, perhaps an increase in staffing, or some other means to try and navigate this problem?
Uh, no, thank you, not on my knowledge, but I'm gonna let, uh, Councilmember, no, um, Chief Van Bailey to answer this, because he's more contact with, with the people that are running that place on daily basis.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, everybody. Um, yes, they, the, the problem has never been the DESC facility folks, they've been a great partner, they've been working hard as far as, you know, communicating, um, it, but they, they have been handed a, a very large challenge, um, to manage 200 and some folks. So the, the security's the same, um, they still have individuals in the parking lot, they have the fenced, uh, fenced area around, which just really kind of funnels people, um, how to get in and out. Um, but as far as, so, so they've been good, they've been very reactive, we've talked to them, we've told them about the amount of calls, those continue to increase. Um, as, as recently as this weekend, we had a call that was 28 blocks south, and it was a resident from the Red, Red Lion, um, that had entered somebody's house, uh, willingly, and they were trespassing and were yelling at them, thinking it was their house. So it's not just the Red Lion or the, the nearby properties, it's hard to measure or calculate when they are now community members, they are out amongst. So unless they tell us, or we can confirm that they came from there, and, and the DESC folks have been great, we can give them names, hey, is this a person that you're familiar with or that's staying, and they will say yes or no, um, if, if we are allowed to, to contact these folks, or if we do catch up to them. So they've been very responsive, but the calls continue, um, it's still, you know, it's about capacity. They have this, this large challenge, which has now been presented to us as an even bigger challenge to manage it. We have the same number of officers, um, now with, with, you know, just recently with the mental health issues that we've been dealing with as recently as last week, it just increases our risk and our chances, um, that we're going to, um, you know, encounter some of these situations. But the DESC folks have been very, um, compliant, they've been very reactive, and they've worked with us, uh, very quick to get back to our, our questions and concerns, um, but it is a, they've got a huge challenge. I hope that answered your question, ma'am.
It did, thank you very much, I just wanted to hear if there had been any change, or as you say, they're doing what they can. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, chief, both of them, Chief Marshall and Chief Van Bailey, for your testimony last Monday, it was very, very valuable, uh, to help us, uh, in this process. Any more comments or questions?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Corman?
I wanted to thank you and, uh, Mayor Pavoni also for, for attending that meeting, and I, I'd, uh, read the details and appreciated all your testimony as well, and, uh, for everybody that spoke, thank you.
Thank you very much. So for what I, um, for what I see, I didn't see anybody disagreeing with the letter that Councilmember, um, O'Hara is proposing, and if, if, if it's, if anybody has strong concerns, just please let me know, uh, send me emails, other than that, I will coordinate with Council Member O'Hara, uh, with Julian. So say that, uh, that this meeting is adjourned, and I'll see you at 7:00. Thank you.